Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 8th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you, everyone. We have a short agenda this evening, and we will start off with some proclamations. Acting Mayor Glenns, would you take us through those, please?
I will. Good afternoon, Council. Good evening. And March is one of my favorite months because it's Women's History Month. And I'd just like to point out, some of the ladies around the council table outnumber the men. Some of, we've got more women on, in our department director roles. So we're, we're doing something right here in Salisbury. But I would like to read a proclamation in, in support of Women's History Month. Whereas March is designated each year by presidential proclamation as Women's Histories, Women's History Month to celebrate and honor women's contribution to history, culture, and society in the United States. And whereas Women's History Month began as a local celebration in Santa Rosa, California, when the Education Task Force of Sonoma County California Commission on the Status of Women planned and executed a Women's History Week. Celebrate, celebrating in 1978 during the week of March 8th to correspond with International Women's Day, which is today. Celebrating its 100th and 10th anniversary of recognizing the social and economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. Whereas a consortium of women's groups and historians led by the National Women's History Project, now the Women's, National Women's History Alliance, in 1980 successfully lobbied for national recognition and, and President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation in February 1980 declaring the week of March 8th, 1980 as National Women's History Week. And whereas Congress expanded the week to a month in 1987, and every year since has passed a resolution and the president has issued a proclamation designated March as Women's History Month. And whereas National, the National Women's History Alliance selects and publishes each year a theme. And 2021's theme is Valiant Women of the Vote Refusing to be Silenced, acknowledges the many women's suffrage centennial celebrations originally scheduled for 2020 that were curtailed due to COVID-19. And whereas the American women of every race, class, and ethnic, ethnic background have been leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement in the, in the nation, including the abolitionist, emancipation, industrial labor, suffrage, civil rights, and peace movements. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have served courageously in the military and made other historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Now therefore, I Julie Glenn, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do your bar proclaim March 2021 as Women's History Month? So that's a good one.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the women, by the way.
Thanks, Jack. And our second proclamation, and I see Dr. Jewel, who is the Chair of the Social Work Department at SU, who's also running for mayor in the town of Snow Hill, is here to accept this proclamation on our behalf. Although we do have other social workers in the room, like Miss Angela. So whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. And whereas social workers have always been present in times of crisis, helping people overcome issues such as death and grief, and helping people and communities recover from natural disasters such as fires, hurricanes, and earthquakes. And whereas social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture, or religion. And whereas social workers in all parts of our society to empower the lives to their fullest potential. And whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help promote, whether in person or remotely, overcome substance abuse disorders and mental illness such as depression and anxiety. And whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest growing professions in the United States with nearly eight, 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2028. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme is "Social Workers Are Essential", embodies the heroic contributions of the social work profession to our nature, including the work social workers have done to heal our nation during these times of, of the pandemics, racial unrest, economic uncertainty, and political divisiveness. And whereas social workers play a crucial role in our nation's healthcare system and have played a key role in the nation's response to COVID-19 and helping individuals, families, and communities cope with the pandemic. And whereas school social workers have also worked with families and schools throughout the pandemic to ensure schools, students reach their full academic and personal potential. And whereas social workers for generations have advocated for positive change that have made society a better place to live, including urging policymakers to adapt minimum wage, improve workplace safety, and enact social safety net programs that help mitigate hunger, homelessness, and poverty. And whereas social workers will continue to stand ready to assist our nation in overcoming present and future challenges, including pushing for racial equity, ending gun violence, improving healthcare and mental healthcare for all, and urging lawmakers to adopt immigration reforms. Now therefore, I Julie Glenn, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do your bar proclaim March 2020 also as National Social Work Month? And I do want to point out that we have a social work intern in our office, Johanna Cooper, who couldn't be with us today. And Dr. Jewel helped make that arrangement possible this year. And it's just been a tremendous opportunity for the city to have somebody with that lens working with us on, on vulnerable populations and immigrant work and immigration work and things like that. So, Dr. Jewel, do you want to add anything here?
Yeah, I just, I do want to say it's an honor to accept this proclamation for March Social Work Month on International Women's Day. And also, you know, Women's History Month, given that social work is a female-dominated profession. And just to give you a little bit of background, the School of Social Work is, houses both an undergraduate and a graduate social work program. We are the only social work program on Maryland's eastern shore. But beyond that, the school has a vast reach across the state of Maryland with satellite programs in Hagerstown and Cecil and Southern Maryland and Chesapeake College. And then all points in between, when you add in our online MSW option. And you know, Julia outlined a lot of what social workers do. But social work is a dynamic profession with a vast reach. Social workers can be found in schools and hospitals and prisons, community organizations, Fortune 500 companies, and in legislative halls, both, both working behind the scenes on getting legislation passed, but also as legislators. Even some NFL teams are hiring mental health counselors. And the first one that was hired was a social worker for the Carolina Panthers. And as our acting mayor has already said, we have a social work intern working with, for the city of Salisbury. So whether we're called social workers, case managers, counselors, therapists, community organizer, policy analyst, or superhero, social workers can be found in all sectors of society. And social workers serve on the front lines. Like, that's why we, we call ourselves, you know, superheroes, because we, we're just right there. You know, we don't run, we don't run away from the fire, as they say about firefighters, too. And so we are on the front lines addressing and challenging the many social problems that face our world, from COVID-19 to poverty to the opioid epidemic, which is significant in our community. And so social workers are essential, and we are making a profound impact on our community. And so thank you so much for recognizing the significant work of social workers during the month, March Social Work Month.
Thank you, Dr. Jewel. Appreciate it. And I will tell you from my experience, my seven years of Lower Shore Enterprise, these are unsung heroes, no question about it. And they're under extreme pressure during the COVID, but their pressure doesn't leave when COVID ends. They are, they are a great bunch of people. And I have not come across one individual who was at LSE that wasn't a superb individual in their own right. So thank you for what you do, all of you. We really, we really appreciate it. Tonight, we are pleased to have Mycomico County Health Officer Lori Brewster, who's going to give us a COVID-19 update. Lori, welcome, and please take, take charge.
Okay, so thanks for inviting me. It has been a year, and quite a year it has been. This time last year, you know, we had just had the first cases in Maryland, and we didn't have one in Mycomico County yet at this point. But we were anticipating the soon arrival. And I told my staff very early on that we were in this as a marathon. This was not a sprint. And my staff said they didn't think it was going to be over a year-long marathon. So I will just start with that. Mycomico County has had 6,828 COVID-positive individuals in our community. And that's as of today. And unfortunately, we have had 143 deaths related to COVID. And I, I say an extra prayer for those families every day because I can only imagine what they're going through as far as dealing with individuals that had died right due to COVID. Interestingly enough, we have tested over 50% of our population for COVID at some point in the past year. That data came directly from the state. And if you recall, we did a very large mass testing in May at Purdue Stadium, last May, what, first and second, and tested over 2,000 people in two days. And that was the state's first mass testing event in Maryland. And since then, we have been to a variety of venues, including the Carroll Street Office parking lot. But when the weather got a little cold, it was a little hard to hold the Q-tips in, in the fingers. So we transitioned over to the Civic Center, and we've been there. But we will be moving that very shortly. So our positivity rate today has, I'm seeing some very positive trends. We are at 3.58% in Mycomico County today. About two months ago, we were way up there, and it was not looking very positive. Maryland as a whole is at 3.36% today. Our highest positivity rate was back in April. It was on April the 17th, and it was a little over 43% positivity for those tested. And the second highest was actually on January the 2nd. Keep in mind that back in April, what was occurring was we were seeing a significant increase in our Haitian Creole population, as well as our Latino population testing positive, many of which were working within the poultry industry. I am so happy to say that our case rate today is at 6.76, and we are below the Maryland average of 12.6. In my dialogue with Julia throughout all of this, I never thought I would say we were below 10. And I think she probably would agree with that, with some of the things that we've looked at in the past. So on vaccinations, there are currently three vaccines available, both Pfizer and Moderna, which both came out mid-December. And they are both two-dose vaccines. The Pfizer first dose, second dose is three weeks after the first dose. Moderna, it's a one-dose, and then 28 days later, you get a second dose. And then there's Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a one-dose vaccine. I get asked all the time, which one should I get? Get whatever you can get when it's your turn to get it. I had a friend share a statement to me that stating that you don't want one of the three vaccines because you don't think it's as effective. It's, it's like being offered a life jacket and not accepting it because you don't like the color. And I really liked that analogy. So in Mycomico County, 17.4% of county residents have been vaccinated with at least the first dose of vaccine, for a total of eight, over 18,000 individuals. 11.8% of our population has received the second dose. So they are fully vaccinated, and that's 12,235 individuals. That could be being vaccinated at any of the pharmacies that have vaccine or Title Health or the Health Department. Or vaccinated in another county because we know that people are traveling across county lines. So Mycomico County Health Department gets about 700 doses a week, which is not a lot for our population. And we have used all of our doses for, that we have received as first doses because we get doses as first doses, as well as second doses. And we have used 80.5% of our second doses totaling over 10,853 vaccines given to Mycomico residents and some other individuals. We have vaccinated 3,151 individuals of color and white individuals at 13,448. Looking at that data, we decided to go out to the community. And we have a vaccine equity officer in-house. And we're identifying places that we can go that are typically underserved as far as vaccine delivery goes. So last week, we went to St. James AME Church, and we vaccinated 160 individuals there that were 65 and older. We are going to the First Baptist Church of Salisbury at the end of the month. And we are looking for other sites as well. Of course, more females are willing to get the vaccine than males. So you males that are on here, you need to get, get, get your vaccine when you can. Okay, Andy, I see that face.
All right, all right.
So the highest number of individuals that have been vaccinated as far as population groups is our 65 and older, followed by our 75 and older. And those are the individuals that we have been focusing on because those are the ones that are dying in the hospitals. Also, want to bring your attention to the new variants that are out. Maryland has all three of the new variants, the UK variant, the South African variant, and the Brazilian variant. They're all in Maryland. We have a South Afri, or yeah, so South African variant, we think, in Mycomico County. The other thing is the National Guard may be bringing a mobile unit into the area at some point to do some outreach into some of the vulnerable communities. We were asked for areas where the, they could go, and we gave them a few sites. And then, of course, the state is having its, beginning a mass vaccination clinic at the Mycomico Civic Center, which is where we are vaccinating. So we are moving. The mass vaccination clinic is supposed to start on March the 18th. And I don't have a signed leash yet, so I can't say where we're moving, but we will be moving. And I guess I will leave it at that so I don't take up too much time, but I will answer some questions.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody has any questions, please raise your hand. I can see you. And Angela?
Lori, by chance, do you have the vaccine equity officer working with the vulnerable Populations Task Force here in Salisbury?
She's getting her information from the multiple health department members that sit on that committee. I think I've got seven or eight staff that sit on it. Thank you, Julia, for the invite.
Nice, nice. Yes, excellent.
April, you had a question? You're on mute.
Um, Lori, good afternoon, good evening. The number that you gave for, it was 3,000 of color who have received their vaccinations, what was that correct number?
3,151 to date. That's as of today. Did not include the very large clinic that we just had. We had over 500 individuals vaccinated today.
Okay, and you gave another number, 13,448? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to also bring to everybody's attention, there are other things related to COVID that the Health Department does, which is contact tracing, which, if you can only imagine trying to reach everyone that has had an exposure to COVID, that, that gets a little daunting at times, especially when people see the Health Department's number come up on their phone. And then enforcement of the governor's orders. We have been out and done enforcement to over 350 organizations. Some of them have been duplicates. And believe me, that is not a fun task. And I greatly appreciate the help of Salisbury City Police when we need to have a police escort to a venue. So that's greatly appreciated.
Billy, you had a question?
I had two. First being, Lori, I know you can't say where you're going, but knowing that walking distance and being close to neighborhoods with, with not a lot of mobile vehicle access, will you be in a place where neighborhood folks can walk to get vaccines?
So we're not, we're not just going to be a stable facility. I mean, we, we're going to have a bricks and mortar facility, but we will be taking our show on the road at least once a week out into the communities. We also have some funding for transportation for individ, individuals if they want transportation assistance.
Lori, I had a request this morning. I was at breakfast, and I had a request this morning for the Haitian church, which they said is a very active community. And they said that they, they would love to have someone come over there to do the vaccines as well, so.
Yeah, they're on our list. You know, we are still limited to the 65 and older group and those that fall within 1A and 1B. I have not opened it up to the entire 1C population yet because we just have other people that we have to get vaccinated.
Right. April, you have your hand raised.
I have one question, Lori. Um, the 3,151 that are of color. Um, I'm going to ask you a question, and this is a tricky question, and I don't expect you to really know it. But is it because of awareness and education that the ones of color are not getting this vaccine?
I think it's a number of reasons, April. You know, there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy out in the community. We have a lot of healthcare workers that have not gotten the vaccine because of vaccine hesitancy. You know, there's the belief out there that the vaccine has fetal parts from aborted fetuses in it, just a lot of inappropriate and inaccurate information out there. So that's one of the things that our vaccine equity officer is going to be doing. And we are actually also hiring an outreach worker that can go out into the communities and provide that education so that we can work on the education front to get people willing to get vaccinated before we actually take the vaccination mobile on the road. I'll say it that way. Thank you.
Billy?
Just piggybacking on April's question, I know there are a number of groups working to do education and outreach. Does, is there a campaign that the Health Department is doing outside of the state's work? Do we have a budget? What's that look like?
Yeah, we're working on getting some information out there different than the state. But you know, we do have to get it approved by the state communications team. So it's, it's a little bit of a slow process some days.
Thank you. I think that's it. Michelle? Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw it.
It's okay. Um, I just, I, I know we aren't going for the 1C yet. When can we expect that to happen? And, and you know, what's the, what's the threshold of, that we're looking for to be able to open that up?
So at the beginning of the month, I had about 8,000 people that met the 65 and older age group that I was trying to get through. I never thought I would see the day that we got even close. We think that we will have gotten through most of them by either next week or the week after. And the next group that I'm going to open up to is continuity of government so that we can, can make sure that government can still operate. And then we will go to our critical infrastructure workers.
And where do caregivers fall in that? Because I'm, I'm a caregiver, a special needs adult, and I get that question a lot from folks. So I know there are a lot of folks who care give for, for disabled adults and children who are anxious to get it. So.
They fall in phase two. So if you can get it under continuity of government, I'd suggest that's where you get it.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. I think that was pretty much it that I was concerned about.
I have, I have a question. Lori, do you know when the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot will be available here in Salisbury?
We received a very small allocation in Mycomico County last week. And we are targeting that for a couple of congregate settings that aren't necessarily elderly individuals that we know we will probably have difficulty finding for the second dose. So if we can give them the first dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's the route that we're going with that. There will be no vaccine from Johnson &amp; Johnson back to the state of Maryland until after the 18th of March because they distributed their entire allotment with the first shipment. Thank you.
Jack, one more from, from a guest here. Could someone, oh, do you believe that May is still a goal for getting, for everyone being able to be vaccinated? I know that was Biden's original, but I think I heard June after.
Yeah, I, I would say either May or June, it should be opened up to the bulk of the population. And you know, we know that there are going to be individuals that don't want to get the vaccine. So, and I see that Colin put in the chat that he spent half his Friday driving his mother and father to get their first dose. Sorry about that. I hope you didn't have to drive too far.
No, it was fine. It was just shuttling back and forth several different times.
Yeah. When we have individuals that are from the same household, sometimes they don't understand that if, you know, when you get the link to set up an appointment, you may have to set up an appointment at 8:00 a.m. or 9:00 a.m. and then another one at 3:00, depending upon availability. But we, we let them come in, so it's, it's hard.
Thank you. We really appreciate the update. Andy, do you have something?
Just real quick, Lori, as the weather's changing, we're starting to get more requests about group gatherings or events outside. I just want to make sure we're giving people accurate information and letting them know what, what is allowed or what we anticipate, you know, spring, summertime. Is the 250 still the recommended number? Is that kind of the mandated group gathering number?
Yeah, for outdoor events, it's 250 or 50% capacity, whichever is the lesser. If I was a bedding person, I would suggest. If I was a betting person, I would suggest that that's probably going to change because the high schools and universities and community colleges not gonna be able to have a graduation with two hundred and fifty as their occupancy. So I would envision that that will likely change at some time in the near future.
Thank you, Lori, it was very informative, thank you for taking the time to answer the questions as well. And we wish you the best of luck getting to the herd immunity.
Yes, we would be very grateful to see that day so that things could get back to normal.
Whatever that is, whatever the new normal is.
Yes.
I agree. Well, thank you again.
All right, thank you.
We also have another presentation today, and we have Colin Zimmerman, the Government Affairs Director for the Coastal Association of Realtors, gonna give us some housing stats for 2020. Colin, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me, and I'm also joined by Austin Whitehead. Austin is our treasurer this year for the Coastal Association of Realtors and is a local Realtor in Wacomico County. I'm gonna share a presentation if I can with you. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So once again, thanks for having us. I've met with most of you individually, or several of you individually, but once again, my name's Colin Zimmerman, I'm the new Government Affairs Director for the Realtors. And what we'd like to do is just go over kind of what 2020 was as far as housing goes for Salisbury and Wacomico, I'm gonna show you both, I'm gonna show you Salisbury first, then I'll give you Wacomico as a whole. But if I let Austin talk for just a few moments and tell you kind of about what it was like for 2020 for the Realtors in the area, what the pandemic meant for and how we reacted to it.
Yeah, thanks guys for having us, Austin Whitehead, real estate agent in Wacomico County and on the board for Coastal Association of Realtors as well. And yeah, 2020, like everybody, definitely unprecedented. And there was a lot of things that had to change, not knowing, you know, how we were going to operate business. And, you know, so a lot of sanitary measures needed to be taken when, you know, meeting with people, trying to prep individuals to limit the number of people that could come at one time because we're going into other people's homes, so we don't want to bring any contamination from individuals into someone else's home, so limiting the number of people, utilizing technology as best as we can. A lot of times I was, for the first time, doing a lot of showings, we have virtually, so that would mean jumping on FaceTime and showing somebody a house virtually before they even step foot in the house, just to limit the number of people that were walking through a house, especially if it wasn't something that they were going to ultimately be interested in. A lot more screening prior to running through figures, hey, does this work? A lot more gathering of information before we move too far forward. That way we can make a decision much further before we, you know, get in contact with anybody. So a lot of extra steps thrown in, a lot of electronic signing that we utilized in presentations over the phone and through Zoom and different methods. So a lot of things that you guys are incorporating now too, so, but it's just, you know, just trying to do our best to keep everybody as safe as possible, but while providing homeownership or housing to as many people as possible.
One interesting note was at the beginning of the pandemic, a lot of things weren't allowed digitally, they couldn't do some signings digitally, couldn't do some of the transaction parts digitally, which the state quickly changed. And we couldn't do any kind of education digitally, which was changed during pandemic, so we could actually continue to educate the Realtors on different things and do continuing. So I'd like to show you some of the numbers for 2020 and then kind of talk about where it's going in the near future. All right, so we got homes sold, and I'm gonna show you over the last six years so that you can have to see the trends that have happened. It's been going up, obviously. These are the number of homes sold in Salisbury proper. So in 2028, eight hundred and seventy-eight homes sold, which is trending upwards, obviously.
And one thing I will throw in there, this is from our MLS system, so there could be more homes that sold off the MLS, but this is MLS eight real estate agents.
Yeah, that's a good point, it's, if you sold a transaction between two people that didn't involve the MLS, we wouldn't have any record of it. So this is a low number. Volume sold being what was the total amount of dollars spent on property in Wacomico County or Salisbury? So in 2015, you're a little over a hundred million dollars. By last year, it jumped up to a hundred and eighty-five million dollars in property that was purchased in Salisbury proper. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of a jump between 2019 and 2020. If you had on that, Austin?
Yeah, and as we move on to, yeah, Julia asked if you can share the slides we're gonna have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of this you'll see into this next slide, a lot of that has to do with both units being sold, more units being sold at higher prices. So that big jump comes from number of units sold plus higher prices, which leads into this next slide.
So obviously it's been trending upwards over the last few years, but it hasn't been jumping real fast. Hundred and forty-five thousand was the average price in Salisbury. Last year was a hundred, or 2019 was a hundred and sixty-nine. As of 2020, then this is the average over 2020. This is not, it was much higher by December, we're at a much higher number than one eighty-eight. But this is the average overall of 2020, so once again, prices are going up. So these are the number of listings that were put onto the market in Salisbury. Twenty fifteen, you had a little over a thousand listings. And last year, you had nine hundred and sixty-one listings. So as prices are going up, number of listings are going down.
Does it have to do with inventory?
It does, that's exactly what the issue is. And I'm glad you mentioned inventory because that's actually gonna be our last slide is inventory numbers, which is gonna be your key market problem here. So days of market, how long is a property staying on the market before it's sold? And we talk about this a lot, how long does it take to sell a house? How fast is it going? Back in 2015, ninety-five days was the average time a property was on the market. Ninety-eight, eighty-one, seventy, sixty-six, fifty-four, actually by the end of December of last year, you were down into the thirties as far as days on market. So your listens are going down. The number of days on market is going down, it's creating a bidding war, it's making prices go up, which drives you to what we call inventory. So inventory, which I'm sure you mostly know, but inventory is if you take the number of units that you have available right now and you divide it by the amount you averagely sell on a month, you've got your inventory number, which is how many months of stock do you have? How many months before you run out of things to sell? For a good market, not a buyer's market, not a seller's market, a good middle-of-the-road market, we'd like to see eight to twelve months of inventory. More than twelve months inventory, you're starting to get into a buyer's market. Property will sit there, it'll become a buyer's market for, and which is great for keeping prices low, affordable housing. Less than that, less than eight months, you're gonna start to get into what we see as seller's market. Prices will go up, you'll have a bidding war, you'll have less control over the market as far as time to buy it, inspections. Affordable housing goes away, rentals go away, people decide to get out of their house and sell it. So let's look at the trends for inventory. So in 2015, you had seven and a half months of inventory. Concern number, it's not a bad number, but it's something to consider. Back in 2015, we gotta start talking about how do we get more houses? Twenty sixteen, you had five and a half, five and a quarter months. Twenty seventeen, four and a half. Twenty eighteen, three and a half, twenty nineteen, two and three quarters, any guess of where we are in 2020? No? Who had one and a third?
I had one and a quarter.
There you go.
Yeah.
You didn't say no.
So if we don't have any more houses listed by the end of April, we will have no houses to sell.
Yeah, so if, yeah, if City of Salisbury said, hey, nobody else can list their house, you know, we don't want anybody to list their house, in one month, there would be no houses at the rate that they are moving right now. So, so not all, so you're seeing a progression, inventory being reduced, you know, supply and demand, the lower the supply and the prices, you know, that price follows that demand. So and what's funny is that, like Colin said, for the last couple of years, my conversation with people has been, hey, you know, what's your need and your want list? Because, you know, we might not get all your needs because inventory's been low recently. And I was saying that, you know, for the last three years, it's going into meeting people, and now it's like, my goodness. So really, and truly, if we want to, the prices where they're, you know, where inventory is so low, you are seeing, you know, bidding wars and things of that nature. And a lot of that has to do just with inventory. And this isn't just a City of Salisbury thing, this is happening in many parts, you know, of the country, so. But.
Awesome, Colin, how does this translate to a developer? This type of slide, like build as fast as you can, or?
You know, it's a good question, and I can speculate, and Austin, you might wanna, you can speculate a little bit, I've never developed a piece. Austin, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, there is in certain areas, there's a couple, what's, what else is going on right now in the COVID world is that lumber is very expensive too. So you're seeing this, it's hard to, the price has to escalate too, not only because of low inventory, but it also has to escalate because of higher prices. So there's a lot of factors that are coming in that are into the squeeze that you're seeing with the house prices are jumping. And it's even the new construction, not just because of low inventory, but also because of that, you know, those higher material costs. So, but yes, in parts of the country where they can, you know, where they can develop more because they have more city services, that's gonna be the need for this area is a, you know, being able to get to public water and sewer to be able to develop more. Because you're never going to see communities like your Western Stales, Nostales, you know, things of that nature run on septic and well, you're not gonna see that anymore. You're going to need areas that are serviced by public water and sewer to be able to fit more houses in a specific area. So yes, developers are looking at this and trying to take advantage, you know, trying to get in and say, okay, I, you know, this is a good time to get in if they can get a hold of the materials. But a lot of them are having a hard time with materials, which is stretching out how long it takes to build a house because they make an order for windows and they get all the windows except for one, and then that one window is on backwater for months. So it's a struggle for them to put up the houses too, just because of getting materials.
It's certainly an encouragement to get development done, but
Oh, yeah.
it's not, it's not a quick process either, you can't just say, all right, let's put some houses up, and it's done, you know, it's something that takes, as you all know, it takes a little bit of time to, especially a master plan community, or if we're talking more than just one-offs, you know, a larger scale development. If you're a homeowner, which I am in Salisbury, it's good. My home is appreciated fifty percent since I bought it in 2018 because my neighbor just sold it for fifty percent more than I paid for mine, and, you know, great, I'm excited. Good for me, but if you're not a homeowner, if you're a renter, if you're looking to buy, it's gonna make it harder for you to enter the market. It's gonna make the cost of living go up for people. So, you know, as much as I do want my house to go up, I also wanna make sure affordable housing is available and that we've got plenty of rentals, and we've got plenty of space for people. So, you know, I know you've done a great job of encouraging development in downtown, you've passed the Horizon Project. But also looking to how can we encourage growth in parts of Salisbury that you think is right for growth? How can we encourage the right kind of development? And how can we partner with you on that? Do you have questions, other questions about this slide or any of those slides I showed you? I can show you Wacomico County as well, but they're somewhat similar.
I think, Julie, I think on the last one, it was homes sold. I saw a question come up in the chat, I don't think it was under contract, I think it was all.
Just homes sold, closed.
Thank you.
The only other question I'd make, a comment I'd make is talking to a couple developer friends, borrowing money is really cheap also right now from the development standpoint, so I don't know if that was to change, if it changes any more of the investment models for people and the development. You know, if money is cheap to borrow, you can invest a lot quicker.
I would say as far as prices, that will slow down prices because, you know, people are payment sensitive. And so, you know, they are looking at their payment, especially if incomes aren't increasing rapidly either. People are relating it to their payment. So yes, the interest rates, you know, the lower the interest rate, the more that they can buy with the same amount of dollar. If I can only afford a thousand dollars a month, you know, and my thousand dollars, you know, is not getting eaten up by as much interest, then I can buy more house. If it's getting eaten up with more interest, then I can buy less house.
Thanks.
So just real quickly, Wacomico, and remember, you have the lion's share of Wacomico, so thirteen-ten sold, fifteen-hundred listings, two hundred and seventy-two million dollars worth of property sold in Wacomico. Average sales price is two oh five, fifty-seven days on market, and not much better if you look at the whole county, one point seven, one point six nine months of inventory. So I will definitely send you a copy of this presentation. I can also provide you any of the other data that you may want. Other questions?
There's a question, raise your hand, I can see you.
I mean, probably more of a comment, I mean, I was seeing an article about, you know, people from the past year or two, even more from some of the metropolitan areas, are looking to areas like the eastern shore to move to. And we've noticed that, you know, since 2015, Salisbury has been, you know, one of the fastest growing economies in the country. We've known this over the past few years, it's just, they just can't build fast enough for the people that wanna live here. So, you know, and it's certainly reflective of what we're seeing and hearing.
You know, one of my concerns is we're gonna miss some of these people that are looking to relocate, especially, and this is me hypothesizing, I don't have strict data, but I would say that the pandemic has made it clear that people can work remotely. And the pandemic has made it clear that people can move out of a major city into a more rural area and still be as productive in their jobs. And a lot of people are choosing that, they're choosing to live into an area that's a little bit more better for their lifestyle. And right now, if they wanted to move to Salisbury, it'd be very difficult, just because the housing market doesn't allow for it. They're gonna have to move very quickly, act very quickly on any piece of property. And, you know, so you're losing people who are choosing other areas just because of sheer amount of housing. And, you know, so you're losing people who are who are choosing other areas just because of of sheer amount of housing. That and broadband.
Thank you, Colin. We we appreciate it and thank Austin. Thank you too for the information. If you provide. Your information to the council, that would be helpful. We we appreciate your participation in the information. Very interesting. Just as a as a side note. In my community, the village of Tony Town Creek, houses, you don't even go on the market. The signs never go up. They, you know, most of it's done within a couple of days. Which I I find stunning compared to what I went through when I tried to move down here. So. But anyway, thank you again. We appreciate it. At this time, I will call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Blake.
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one closed session minutes. February eighth, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes. February sixteenth, twenty twenty one work session minutes and February sixteenth special meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Blake.
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Jackson, this is Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, council. This evening, we have two separate requests for surplus. The first is from the Salisbury Police Department for six different vehicles. There is a memo for each vehicle in your packet. The vehicles either have too high a mileage, too expensive to repair. Or they've been involved in accidents. And then the second request is for the, let's see, five properties. That were discussed at work session last week, the first being six twenty one Short Street. And then the four separate properties on Anne Street. In your packet, I did put the S DAD information in there so you can get an idea of the. The values of those, the of the properties.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda? No, Mr. Boda said no.
No.
Ms. Jackson? No. Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor to approve the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, council.
Approved. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda. We're open for public comments. Anybody that wants to make a public comment, please identify yourself. Ms. Glance, anybody request? Okay. We'll now go to administration and council comments. Ms. Glance, any comments for the good of the order?
No, just on this, on this day of. Day of women, thank you for the opportunity. Continue to serve our citizens. It's an incredible pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Guys, just continue supporting our local businesses and many of them are owned by women, so please make sure we we support those as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Celebrate Women's History Month. Thanks to all the women who make the world rock. We are an important and valuable asset to every entity moving forward. Women are the constant movers and shakers. Let's keep rocking and shaking things up. Women do what we do, make it work for us because we are the women of the world. Have a good.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's nothing else to say after that, really. I know it, we do, we do, we do. If you're healthy enough, obviously give blood. I'm going to be giving a pint myself on Saturday morning. So yeah, that too maybe, but maybe later, but donate the blood first. And so, and then of course, shop local.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
I I mean. Everybody else has said it, but but, you know, we have some great women in leading the city and I'm really. You know, pleased and honored to work alongside of them. I just want to remind everybody that, yes, COVID is still a thing. Please keep wearing your masks. Even if you've only gotten one, if you've gotten your first dose or your second dose, please continue to do to do it to stop the spread. And if you are eligible, please sign up. If you need help, you know, reach out. You know, there's, I just helped a lady today who had no internet access, so she needed help getting signed up. So, you know, reach out to your councilperson or or to the city or somebody to help you get through the process if you can't otherwise. See this, you know, get to get to the website and sign up.
Thank you, Michelle. Representing the minority on the council. I would, I would like to commend all the women for the work they do. You're right, we, this is the, I think this is the first time in the council's history that we have three women on the council. Is that right, Mrs. Nichols? Yes, sort of, I guess.
Yeah.
For for. The one thing I would like to say is that. Please wear your masks, masks. And I will tell you something, there's there's something besides the fact. That you receive your your you're vaccinated. I will tell you personally, for both my wife and I. Once we got our second shot and two weeks later, my mental health improved dramatically. And I think people underestimate, it really felt like there was some, a load lifted off my shoulders. And I think that we talked about that, actually, a bunch of guys at breakfast this morning. And and everybody said the same thing. It does make a difference. So there are many reasons to get the COVID vaccine. But please do, and until you do, and even when you do, until we reach the herd immunity, please wear your masks. With that, I wish everybody a great week. Thank you for participating tonight and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.